Lando Huma, Director of Student Services.
Patrick Gordon, Principal, Sunape Central Elementary School.
Sean Moynihan, Principal, Sunape High School.
Megan Reed, Assistant Principal, Sunape High School.
Mrs. Harris, School Board.
Karen Goff, School Board.
Annie Nippon, School Board.
Scott Christmas, School Board.
Ed Anderson, School Board.
Your school's superintendent.
And if we can stand for the pledge.
I call you to rise to the United States of America. To the Republic, to which this is one nation under God, with no government, liberty, and justice for all.
Looking forward to approval of the school board meeting minutes, and it looks like we have a lot to go over.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the November first, 2023, school board meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the November first, 2023, school board meeting.
Second Andy's motion. Any concerns or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of November first, 2023, school board meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the November first, 2023, school board meeting.
Second Andy's motion. Any concerns or changes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Looking for a motion for the approval of the minutes of November ninth, 2023, ABC meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the November eighth, 2023, ABC meeting.
I'll second it.
Does anybody have any questions?
So it should be added to the list of the ten names.
Yes, I just kind of made that up. With that correction, any concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Looking. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November fifteenth, ABC meeting.
I'll second it.
Any concerns, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
And looking for a motion for the minutes of November twenty seventh, 2023, CIP meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the November twenty seventh, CIP meeting.
I'll second it.
Any comments or questions?
I got one little change that I would just like to ask for a change to the wording in the last paragraph, where it says that, um, that the CIP plans to address a more secure entrance at SESCES. Can we just change that? It's so it says that we're assessing the potential options for that. So it's just a little bit, because I don't think we've decided on anything in particular at this point. Thank you.
After those corrections, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 The agenda review, we had one that's not.
So we, especially the faculty member of the middle high school who was going to keep presenting tonight, has come down with an illness and is not going to be here, so we'll move that till later in the year, so we have no presentation.
The SMHS presentation?
Yeah, I wanted to present.
Oh, I'm sorry. Reading down. Public forum in accordance with the policy BEDH, but it's from the public. Nothing child. Hearing that, we'll move on. And looking for school updates, SES.
Well, it's been a pretty busy month. We're moving into a busy, through a busy month right now. Our committee for playground, we met with two contractors. We got together, we had a discussion about those plans, and we sent them feedback based on those plans uh, for something more along the lines of a wish list that we were hoping for. Um, in addition to, we invited them back to look at our preschool playground, um, to make proposals around that, to combine those projects and aim to fundraise for both and do both at the same time. Uh, we haven't yet to receive anything back yet, uh, waiting on that from both of them. Right now, they're both trying, both trying to close out, I don't know how, they're both trying to finish out the year, finish up project at a playground around state. I don't know how they're doing it right now. Um, but they said they're going to give them to me this month when things slow down again. Uh, first trimester closed and parents, uh, now have their court cards. Our teachers did a really excellent job navigating home, uh, learning a new platform. And, uh, we're working towards, moving towards an electronic copy set they get home, but we have to figure out how to do, uh, a read send if people haven't seen it, if parents received it, seen it, um, which is something that our teachers really would like to see continue. So we did the old print and put it in an envelope with your signature in return for these, uh, just to make sure that our parents see it. Uh, we hosted a very popular kindness spirit week. There are different themes like kindness ties us together, where everyone more ties. Uh, there was, the most popular one was kindness kindred spirits, students dressed as teachers and teachers dressed as students. Imagine how much fun the teachers had with that. But there were seven different Mr. Gordons that day accounted, so my job was easy that day. Um, I continue to be unbelievably impressed and proud of our community. We put out a call for food items for Thanksgiving baskets and it was, our bins were overflowing. Uh, we took multiple trips to the car to load it up, to get it ready and get those things prepared. Um, and on November twentieth, we had a parade to honor a student who had gotten make-a-wish because he had been ill a few years ago. Um, in between Steve Burke, the rector rector, the fire department, the police department, and all the students from the middle high school and the elementary school with science, even Holleran. I think that kid felt very special. He really showed he appreciated it. Um, we received a nice note from the family about it. So, uh, just really impressed by our town and community, the lovely show for students and doing the right thing. Upcoming events that are maybe the board might want to attend on December fourteenth is our annual holiday concert at the Sherb at six o'clock. Our annual Jingle Bell Blitz, which is like a Christmas themed field day. Uh, it's the last day before vacation, the twenty-second. If you're interested in seeing a wild time, come see, uh, the cross grade levels, what's going to happen there. And, uh, right now, we're finalizing our winter activity program. It's been a challenge getting going. We had a hard time getting enough activities and getting enough spots. But we, uh, last week, finally, we were able to really make sure that that could keep going. But we're going to need to keep looking at the program and its overall health and making sure we're quick to go there.
Overall health because you don't have as many interested students or?
Because we're having a hard time with activities for our hundred and seventy-six students.
Oh, wow. Whereas, what are you seeing as the challenge?
Uh, outside organizations struggling with their own staffing. So when we contact dance centers or gymnastics and asking them if they can, many of them have, um, hit their thresholds for being able to staff for those kinds of things. Um, I, I think I reached out to three dance studios and I think I haven't heard back from one of the three, just because that's how alone they are. Um, but they're all just operations and not taking on more.
And the playground too, um, I know you, you intended to do fundraising and such for that. Has that started already or are you waiting for costs?
We are waiting for a finalized plan, a picture that we can show our community.
Yeah.
Because we know that that will energize any efforts, um, both on our students. We have students who are unbelievably excited to get going on that jet to stop by today, wondering where we're at. Um, and we have a lot of ideas about how to hopefully start doing that. So yes, we're going to start that. My hope is that at the January, or maybe I'm going to have something physical to show you, because I would like to show you, this is one of our first groups of CIP. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mind if I go to Mr. Flader?
I'll go.
Your representative.
And guys, I apologize for my tardiness tonight. I'm feeling a little bit under the weather, so bear with me. I will make this one quick. Over the past month, uh, life at Sunape has been quite good. Seniors are working on their senior projects, are, are about halfway through, and winter sports have begun to kick off. The basketball teams have had their season openers and the ski team has finally gotten onto snow. And most students seem really excited for the athletic season. Students have been really starting to settle into their classes well and the general feeling that even after the recent Thanksgiving break, the learned material beforehand has stuck well. Students in classes have also been doing quite well, whether AP or not. The library has once again been looking for talented students to show their abilities in SMHS advisory acts. Previously, students have sung, play violin, perform piano pieces, and all other manner of talents in order to enrich the school experience. Student council has also began to put up forms for the winter workshops and received some good support, some, uh, new ideas there, so looking forward to that. And despite the recent shortage of cafeteria workers, Mr. Fullerton, kitchen staff, occasionally I carry on, Mr. Holden and Mr. Reed have done a great job continuing to serve students, uh, quality meals for lunch and breakfast in the mornings. Uh, and just a quick update for my next report, I plan to meet with some middle school students as well to give you a further perspective on what's happening with them. Uh, currently, I am unfortunately restricted to reporting on just high schoolers because those are the kids I see most of the time. So if you guys have any questions, please feel free to email me, shoot me a text, whatever.
Do you remember, so you didn't want to get you on here, were you able to attend the training this weekend?
Uh, no, unfortunately it was not. There was a little bit of a mix-up with the dates on that.
So there was a statewide, uh, student rep, uh, training that, that is put on by the school association, so we'll give another date, we'll make sure to get it. Hope you're feeling better.
Yeah, thank you, Sean.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David.
Good job by David. Um, uh, similar to Mr. Gordon, we have our holiday concert, so that's going to be here tomorrow at six thirty. Uh, we had our veteran appreciation breakfast, which has been, um, organized by Mrs. Reed. It has been longstanding now. It was originally scheduled for November ninth. The, the weather wasn't great November ninth, so we postponed November ninth, even though we were here, uh, and moved it to the, to the fourteenth. Um, even so, we were able to have twenty-five local veterans. They attend the breakfast. I may meet with our global studies students and have conversations with them. Uh, and then we have a brief recognition this summer, so it's a really nice day, and so we had that on November fourth. Uh, we had an honor roll field trip to Dartmouth College Women's Hockey League last Friday, so the guidance department does a great job. They, they try to do a, a reward trip for students making honor roll each quarter. Largely attended, which makes sense by a lot of the school students and education high school students. Uh, for the parents, our second quarter progress reports will go out this week, so it's hard to believe sometimes if we're, uh, you know, closing in on halfway through the year. We're not there yet, but halfway through the second quarter. Uh, the Sunape yearbook, um, was recognized for meeting and seating, um, the first national deadline. We have six students who are leading the yearbook effort this year, so again, this used to be a class years, years ago. Um, I know you had budget meeting today. We've saved money on the yearbook. The yearbook is profitable. We don't run it as a class anymore, so. When you get those questions, well, how have you saved any money? That's a way we've saved money, uh, from like four or five years ago. Um, a little bit of unfortunate news, our theater production for the fall had to be canceled. Um, we just had a, you know, just some inconsistency on ability to make, to make practice and, and, uh, we had some kids on the soccer team who, who ended up helping out, but they just didn't feel they were going to be able to meet, um, the production date and do it in the service that it, that it needed to be done. And so we made a, it was a joint decision to, to just do the spring production, so. Uh, I'd be very surprised if you had students going, I can't believe they did that. They were certainly part of that process. Um, but, uh, we're looking forward to a, a good theater production in the spring. We're planning a trip to Broadway in the spring as well, so we're hoping that that might get some excitement in that as well. And then I want to just turn things over for, to Mrs. Reed for a minute, so she can discuss the communication survey that's being, being done um, in conjunction with Mr. Reed.
So we know from the strategic plan, one thing that we're looking at is communication and seeing, um, what we can do to look at, how are we doing with communication and what are ways we can improve with communication? So Mr. Reed and I put together, um, a focus group and invited many parents to come and join us and give some initial thoughts and feedback and helped us put together a survey. And that, um, survey is now been emailed out to parents. We're putting flyers up in the community, trying to, we've got an ad in the Hearsort shopper, trying to hear from Sunape. Um, and our tagline is, you know, we want to hear from you about how you want to hear from us. And, you know, within the survey, we sort of list a number of different ways we are communicating. It's just really trying to figure out what are the channels that people are using and where to put our efforts. When you look at, you know, between a website, Facebook, Twitter, SportsU, email, I mean, the list goes on and on. And it's, you know, it's hard to maintain all of those different channels without missing. If something gets canceled, you may hit it on four channels, but not five. Um, and just really figuring out where people want to hear from us, so we know where to really invest our efforts and seeing if there are any things we haven't thought of yet, some great ideas out there of ways we can get information to folks. We're working awfully hard at it, but we're also a pretty big business with no, um, like PR department. So a lot of times it's, you know, I'm sending a post to Facebook at eight o'clock at night and the coach is posting things on SportsU and it, it really, um, it's a valiant effort by many, but it needs, um, we need some help to figure out where to put our energy. So that whatever new channel we develop or whatever mechanism we use, it's worth the energy and, and people are feeling like they know what's going on with us. So we'd love for, for everybody to complete that survey and give us feedback. Look forward to then being able to work on that with some direction from our community. Are you getting a good response rate? So far, I think we have about seventy-five responses. The community, um, advertising about it probably hasn't really hit yet because it was just in today, or is it next week's shopper?
It should be in this week's shopper.
It should be in this week's shopper, and then, um, there'll be tags at the post office. People can rip off of the QR code and those will start to hit, like Sunape happens and some of those other mechanisms will start to hit. So we'll keep the, the survey open until the twenty-second of December. So hoping over these next few weeks to, to really spread that word and, and give feedback. And our intention to, so the survey's not anonymous, the survey is, you know, leave your name so that we can follow up with people and then really planning to reach out to people who, especially parents who haven't answered the survey. Because maybe one of the ways we're communicating about a survey is through email, and maybe that is just not a great mechanism for those folks, and we need to hear, how would you have wanted to hear from us?
Right.
And, and doing a lot of follow-up there, so hoping to do a great, you know, have a really thorough collection of feedback to give us some good direction and make another big push with this. Have you guys had to cancel the fall, one of the plays before?
No.
This is the first time?
This is the first time.
Any reason in particular, do you think, or like is, are you seeing like waning interest from the students or is it just maybe coincidental?
Um.
Hard to say.
Yeah, I, I think one of the things that happens sometimes, and I'll use sports as analogy instead, sometimes it's, it's, sometimes I think there's a, there's a desire to, can we work kind of hard and do really, really well? You know, so, you know, can I work kind of hard and make this on iPhones, you know, and they find sometimes that's really hard. So I think without any maliciousness sometimes, it's like, well, if I don't, and there's a truth to it, if I don't go Tuesday, we'll probably be okay. If I don't go on that Monday, it will probably be okay, but I think what's happened is we just had some students. In practice, they're just busy, right? But I think there was a combination of I'm busy and I'll miss a few here and I'll miss a few there and it doesn't seem, on September twentieth, it doesn't seem like a big deal. But when I get to like October twentieth, and now I've had this person miss four and this person miss three, and, you know, I wasn't getting that face-to-face with the person I was going with, and then you get a few weeks before the play and we're like, we're not ready, right? And, and the solution to we're not ready is we really, really need to, you know, spend some hours on this over the next three hours, it was like, or over the next three weeks, it was kind of like, yeah, no. Um, so I think that was, I think that was a part of it, so. Um, I think hopefully lesson learned a little bit, you know, on just, um, you know, it's okay to miss one here and it's a, you know, but when, when one turns into five and the, and the, and the five I missed, all of a sudden, you know, I made three, but then the three I made, I, the person who I was supposed to have a lot of lines with, they were doing what I was doing, which is wait, they weren't there. So I think there's sometimes that I missed, but everybody else is there all the time. There's only me missing. It's like, no, you're the only one missing, um, and so I think that happened by the, so no, no maliciousness or anything.
No, no, just unfortunate.
Um, unfortunate, um, and, um. That wasn't, that wasn't the exception. That was the rule. It wasn't like three people missed and so, and so ten people were kind of out of luck. It was more like there were like two or three people who were being pretty consistent in nine or ten missing. Uh, and again, some, some times they're studying. Some of them have to work. Some of them are doing a different sport, you know, lots, lots of things on it, but it definitely happened.
Anybody have anything for school board?
Congress is upstaged.
I'd be happy to be skipped. I will be brief as, as possible. Just thanks to Megan and John and that community for putting that survey together. So one of the things that we found coming up in the past four years, nine years with Billy Project, we put it in the newspaper. I don't need the newspaper. Put it in a mail. I don't go to the mailbox. We did put it on the doorknob. I don't do this. But one of the things that I really like about the survey is it allows you to tell us what you like about it too, like what we're, maybe we're doing great just where we are and we're sprinkling the infield. It would certainly would be nice to hone in that effort a little bit. Um, so it'll be really interesting to see what those results are. Thank you both, John and me, and the rest of that community for putting that together. Working on, um, budget has been a lot, a lot of the past month, um, but we feel like we're in a good place for that and we'll be producing that in our next meeting, in our budget hearing in January. Uh, believe it or not, well, I guess not believe it or not, inclement weather is upon us. Uh, we were scratching a couple times at potential delayed openings or closures. Um, I know yesterday morning was a little, little dicey too, a little bit of the black ice out there, so hopefully we got people up to speed. We've tested our systems, knock on some sort of wood we haven't had a coffin yet, but I'm sure those days are, are soon to be, uh, soon to be coming. Uh, and the last piece I just wanted to hit on real quickly, and I'll, I'll try to, again, be brief. Um, people might saw the two recent court cases coming out of the Hampshire Supreme Court, uh, the Convalve case and the Ram case. So the great news is that the court has decided that the way things are being done in the Convalve case and the cost of inadequate education is quite near where it should be. Right now it's roughly forty-one, a hundred dollars. Court's saying it should be a minimum of at least seven, seventy-three hundred. That's great. Uh, I think a lot of people who've been in the state of New Hampshire for a long time in education have realized that the court has articulated this many times, that the cost of adequate education in New Hampshire certainly isn't what is being paid to schools, um, and collected in taxes and paying schools. But unfortunately, the case kicked back to the legislator. The legislator has had trouble solving, um, that issue. And whether it's a revenue issue, whether it's a tax issue, whether it's a equity issue, there certainly are, are lots of issues there. So that, most likely that case, the Convalve case, we'll have an appeal to it. Um, it will probably get tied up in court for another year and will not get in front of our legislators potentially for another year. But again, uh, sort of justifies this that it's been around, the, the block a little bit here that, yep, it was thirty-eight hundred for a while. So you certainly can't educate the kid in any school district thirty-eight hundred thousand adequately, uh, but maybe I'll work in charge. Uh, the second is the Ram case, and I know that's drawn a little more attention here in Sunape. Uh, the Ram case is really linking up the swept tax, the statewide property tax, which is collected across all towns in the state of New Hampshire and is put towards funding the hundred fifty-nine thousand kids in New Hampshire, uh, giving, giving them a public education. So to adequately, to adequately educate those hundred fifty-nine thousand students, according to the Department of Education, the revenue will cost three hundred eighty-three billion, rough numbers to do that a year. So every year, a tax bill goes out across the state, there's a statewide property tax of a dollar twenty-two. Okay, it's assessed, it's everybody's property, that gets collected, and then depending on how much money that is and how much money you need in inadequacy, you either get some money to help out some debt of the state or you collect excess swept, excess tax. And so Sunape collects excess swept, excess swept. Uh, see, the amount's close to about a million dollars, and what the court has ruled is that it's unconstitutional. It's, it's not a fair tax. And so now it has to be, again, kicked back to the legislator. It will be, uh, appealed, which will take another year, but then we'll get kicked to the legislator at some point in time, potentially to be resolved. Um, I don't know that, I'm going to try to guess what that means. If that tax was to be put, if, if that decision was to be upheld today, uh, Sunape would have an excess swept tax of about a million dollars. Not sure because I don't know what the legislators would do, but that million dollars potentially would go someplace other than Sunape. It may go to a pool of money. It may stay here somewhere to offset something else, but that million dollars that we collected excess tax has been found to be, um, unconstitutional as far as the tax is concerned regarding the case. So we'll keep our eye on these things. Um, certainly folks who have been in the state of New Hampshire long enough remember donor towns and receiver towns. Uh, there was, uh, I think Scott referred to it as something a little different today, the meeting, but Robin Hood. Um, but certainly, uh, I know the town of Sunape is involved in a coalition that is keeping a close eye on donor towns and receiver towns. The unfortunate part of this, if the town of Sunape was to lose that million dollars of excess swept, that would have been, that money would have to be made up, because all that money that's collected by swept currently stays locally. So that all stays right here, and it just helps offset your local tax rate towards, towards the education. So if that million dollars left, the state, the, the town went to the state somewhere, we'd have to make that million dollars up locally to a local tax rate. So the state tax rate is one dollar twenty-two cents. The local tax rate right now is four dollars fifty, four twenty-one, I think. It was four dollars twenty-one cents, so you can see the potential, the potential impact a million dollars could have of walking out the door and then having to re-race that money. Again, no panic. We don't need to panic. This is going to take some time. It's taken thirty years. Uh, I feel like we've just hit rewind and play and thank you Judge, you reaffirm what we always believe. Uh, now hopefully somebody can do something about it, but that will be seen. That's it. That's it. Unless there's questions, of course, we'll move on.
Moving on to action items, SM, SH, extracurricular positions, MS, boys' basketball coach.
Uh, in your packet, we were able to, uh, go out and get ourselves a boys' middle school basketball coach. I just would ask that you support that position, uh, it is in the, uh, teacher contract.
No questions, all those?
I'll, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the middle school boys' basketball.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Well, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Did we get the name of who it is? Are we supposed to get the name? Because I couldn't find it. Like, I, I mean, I see that it's there.
Did you find the back, the backup?
I, I couldn't find a backup.
Okay.
I have, I have the name.
Do you have the backup?
No.
All right, sure about that?
Yeah.
Would you like me to share?
Yeah, sure.
So Trujica Krychek, and he's coached press in the past, so he did, he did soccer.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, so he's a coach of these.
So did any of you get the backup to the five?
Not, not just.
Did you get the minutes?
Yes.
Because they're hyperlinked.
All the hyperlinks were, but that one didn't go. It's like a little.
Assemble it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. My apologies. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Looking for a motion to approve the manifest as written.
Project update. Not a lot to talk about, but, um, we're still working through a few punch list items, and I think they're almost complete. You know, we're talking about little touch-ups here and there, but all the main components have been installed. Fire alarm, um, components have been put in. Has the, has, has a fire marshal come back or?
Fire marshal is on.
Okay.
How was factor back?
Um, you know, biomass is up and running. We've seen some steam coming out of the, the stack.
Matt's been tracking data.
Right?
Right. So we've got a little bit of data, so hopefully by the time we get to deliver it, we'll have a little more, better picture of that.
Great month of October, and based upon that, uh, we're now looking at different temperatures and trying to sub-adjust some of the cold weather temperatures, and Matt's able to project that for about the remaining months. Uh, but hopefully we'll be getting a little more data in October and potentially a little more data in December.
Yeah, the initial data looks really nice, um, some cost savings there. Sure. Um, still working, you know, unfortunately, we still got a few gremlins in it, working through them and, uh, getting, you know, fixed and, and hopefully be fine tuned soon, but so far, so good.
How is the inside of the school been, Patrick, with it?
Um, we've had some pickups in the system in the mornings where, uh, maybe the, um, the biomass boiler hasn't clicked on and then the propane hasn't turned over. But, um, Matt has been working directly with the programmers. And actually, uh, I've learned that programmers usually don't come back after they've worked on the system. Usually they're going to work remotely, make everything work, but.
But they come, they came last Friday, they're coming tomorrow again, and they might be again next week, because they're working through all the bugs in the program to make sure that like, when one system doesn't work, the other one clicks over, what it's reading and how it's reacting, how it integrates with the phone app that Matt has to be able to just live, look at every classroom and change them. So, I have confidence we're gonna get it going right in the next week or two.
So we did have a bug two weeks ago, again, the president of the biomass company, Mike Rollin, and the control people came, had it all fixed, had it all set to go, and our new neighbors down here on Little Main Street on Friday had a, they, they put holes in transfers already, and that somehow caused a surge, back in and blew a couple of control panels, and shut it down over the weekend, and so they had, as Patrick said, they're now coming to get that back up and running. So, I think we, we had bits to gremlins, we weren't counting on the power surge to go back and hit them. So we're putting in ground protection, another layer of protection to sort of prevent that from happening again. So, we're learning some things now, but again, as Andy said, the numbers on it that were projected are really impressive to see, and there's gonna be some savings there for us to have coming up along the way.
Yeah, not to mention like we talked about earlier, it's a local fuel, you know, it's good for the local economy, saves tons of carbon, so, it's just all around a good program.
How long does, do you know yet how long this, when you show that silo lasts? Because I've never seen anybody that film.
Two weeks, wasn't it?
Bottom month.
No, it wasn't there?
Yeah, it was bottom of the month. As of right now, we haven't blown it into the, for January, February, so we're down to bottom of the month.
I think Matt projected, when we get into the cold weather months, based on where we're at, it'll be bi-monthly.
Yeah, yeah. But it's running, I mean, it's running really efficiently, so hopefully, hopefully we'll even be better than Matt's projection, but, yeah.
People are anxious to see what it's gonna say.
So Matt, control reach classroom, phone, from his phone.
Yeah, there's an app that Matt has remote access to the whole school, and when everything is running right, I mean, Matt will know, like, there'll be a low temperature alarm, right? So it'll be like, oh my god, you know, the school's fifty degrees on Monday morning, you know, he can get there early, get things switched over, you know, or if it happens on a weekend, but literally, he can check the data from his phone and get historicals on every classroom, you know, change the temperature.
Be interesting to see the classrooms with the difference of the windows.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's already been using it, he had one day last week or two weeks ago, where he checked it in the morning, there were two classrooms with low alarms, went in, bumped those two up, and they were fine.
Yeah.
All right, because I'm always so excited for the manifests. Looking for a motion to approve the manifests.
I'll make a motion to approve both the AP manifests and apparel manifests as they are stated on the agenda, which is publicly posted.
I will second it.
Is my period second?
Second.
Any concerns or questions? All those in favor? I proposed. Agenda items for the next meeting?
So at our next meeting, we have our budget hearing before. At that budget hearing, Kelly and I will present the budget, the default, the warrant, and the ABC report, and then after a school board meeting, which follows directly after, you will deliberate and accept or reject our budget, our warrant, our default, and our ABC report. So we have some work to do, a lot of information that.
The hard ones are you've been done?
A lot of the works been done, we've had a great ABC process.
We've done it four times now, so we've made it up pretty good, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I think we have a really, very much of going in, given some of the economic times, and potentially looking at some more articles to help continue to follow through the district plan regarding special education and also facilities, and just ensuring we continue to keep enjoying it the way they need to love it.
That's it. No requests from the public? Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Take a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Second.